Just a moment.
So I think this is 10 of the same page.
Okay.
You want to check me? Okay.
Yep.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 30th, 2023 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. Before we go on, I just want to, can I get a verification that we are being heard? Because everyone looks muted in the Zoom. Okay, great. Well, we'll try again. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 30th, 2023 meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted hybrid, both in the meeting room at Town Hall and also on Zoom. You may watch it here if you're here or if you're online on Zoom. You can also call in with the Zoom link, which you should already have, or come down and join us here. The meeting is being recorded.
Does that say?
I believe it's everything we need. All right, we're going to call this meeting to order, and we will begin with public comment.
Okay. I would recommend that you make sure that we can hear Richard.
What's that?
Have I heard? Okay.
So if this is about the upcoming public hearing for the warrant articles, there will be comment for those in particular later? Okay, great. That's why I assume people are here, but wonderful. But if there's any other public comment, all right, I will call out that Richard Harris, our interim planning consultant, is joining us via Zoom as well. So we do have technical knowledge in the additional technical knowledge available for the town as well. Thank you, Richard. And all right, with no public comment, next up on the agenda would be the decision for 274 Prospect Street. I'm going to move that later because that, I'm assuming that this crowd is not here for that in particular. All right, we need to wait two minutes before we can start the public hearing. I shouldn't be in violation of anything if I just straw poll now to see which warrant articles people are interested in, right? Okay, great. Could I just do a quick straw poll, which warrant articles people are here for? Because if you're all here for one in particular, we can hit that first and get you out of here faster. Or not, if you want to stay for the whole thing.
Exactly. Not that you need to leave.
No, you don't need to, but just want to respect your time. So if you are here for the water, for the water supply protection warrant article, could you just give me a hand? Great. Could you give me a hand if you are also here for other warrant articles? Seeing none. All right, wonderful. That answers the question. We will begin with the water supply protection article. Is that one or two article? I think that one's one, right?
It was two, I believe. We wanted to change it and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that solar is two with the redefinition. Okay. Okay, yep. Because some of our articles were split or combined depending to make it, as town council looked at them and said, this is the correct way to put these forward. We have one minute remaining.
Almost have the hard copies ready.
Hmm. If we need them, I don't know, I mean, if you want them, that's your call, but. Oh, I see we do have, I see that we do have people from the town here on Zoom as well. And I didn't get a cha, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to look and see if any of you use the hand raise feature, but we have five people in the room who are here specifically for the water supply warrant article. So we will be going to that first, and we will hit the others. If at any point during public comment periods you want to speak, raise your hand, and Richard, who's the host, can let us know and let you speak, and we'll be golden. Richard, does that work for you as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great, it is now 6:05. And Madam Clerk, would you like to?
Yes.
Open our public hearing?
Okay. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 30th, 2023, 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. to make alterations to Code of the Town of Lunenburg, Mass., Chapter 250, zoning, Article 2, definition, Section 250-2.1, terms defined, word usage, Article 4, use regulations, Sections 250-4.1(c)(2), 250-4.5(a), commercial district accessory uses, 250-4.6(a), office park industrial district accessory uses, 250-4.9, water supply protection district, 250-4.13, solar energy systems, Article 5, dimensional regulations, Section 250-5.1(b)(5), Article 6, general provisions affecting all districts, Section 250-6.4, driveways and entrances, and updates to the official zoning map. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg, Mass.
All right, there was just a little sidebar here, making sure that we were going to handle the public hearing correctly for you.
Sure.
So as we said, we are going to open with Article 9, which is the water supply district and water supply protection. And what we'll do is normally at a public hearing, due to, due to people changing positions in the town government and everything and leaving jobs and entering jobs, normally we'd ideally have the public hearing a little earlier, and we'd be able to solicit feedback, make amendments before submitting it for the town warrant. That was not an option we had this year, just due to timing. So what we, we will solicit your feedback, and we will discuss it, and amendments can be submitted on the floor at town meeting. And if this is something that, based on feedback, we decide to do, we can as well, I can put a slide together, laying those out clearly, so everyone can see the same wording and everything else. All right, so this is for the water supply protection district first, and please, public comment.
You might want to let Richard see if he's got anything to say.
Oh, that's fair. I am going to turn to Richard, our interim planning consultant, first, and just ask Richard if he has anything, any input he wants to give or anything else he wants to share on it before we go forward.
I just stated, I understand the intent is to bring this up to current standards, current standards of practice in the area of water supply protection. We have noted there's a couple of Scrivener errors in it that need to be corrected, and references to Section 7 and 8 need to be referenced to G and H instead. There's a reference to Section 9.5, should be 8.4, and there's a reference to high water supply, should be high groundwater. But those did some minor Scrivener errors that can be corrected through a simple amendment at town meeting.
Thank you, Richard. And, but this is a public hearing, we would love your public comment. If you have thoughts you want to share, please do. If you have questions for us, please ask. Please join us. What you'll do, you'll come up to the podium, you'll share your name and your, your full name, your address, and then please share away.
Good evening. My name is Joan Pease. I live at 11 Winter Green Court in Lunenburg. I attended the select boards' meeting last week with a concern about this warrant article. At the time, Madam Town Manager told me that indeed she would address my concern. My concern was that in section, let's see, of this, Section D, it references a map, which since the map is referenced in the warrant article, the map will now become a part of the regulation, should this warrant article be approved. And I asked that the map be included in the booklet mailed to all the residents, so they would understand what they were voting for. The map in the back of this booklet is illegible. It cannot be read. The key is in red. If you have the original map, it says that the zone ones are circled in red, and the map that is in the booklet is almost impossible to decipher even with a magnifying glass. That's my first concern. My second concern is that as I read the warrant article and the narrative of the warrant article, there is no mention of Zone 1 around the wells in the warrant article. The warrant article is silent on Zone 1. However, the map that you have included and referenced in this warrant article, and thus will become part of this warrant article, has Zone 1 circled. So in order for me to support this warrant article, and in order for me to encourage others to support this warrant article, a new map would have to be created and referenced that had no Zone 1s on it. Well, the Water District can have Zone 1s, but the Planning Board is not proposing any Zone 1 regulations. Therefore, I'm asking that an amendment be put forward to have a new map with no Zone 1s on it, and to have a statement in the narrative saying that as far as the Planning Board is concerned, there will be no Zone 1 regulations on their part. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So would we typically have a back and forth and just, I haven't been, I've only done these?
It's a public hearing, so we can have a back and forth, or we can invite more public comment and wait until we've gotten the collective?
That, that sounds good to me.
Or we can respond and, okay, however you want to run.
Yep.
Does anybody have a preference, I guess, might be a good question?
That's fair.
I mean, you wait.
Oh, what was that, Richard?
I'd recommend that you wait and get all the people commenting at first in the meeting, and then respond to all those at one time. I think that might be most, most effective.
Sure. Very good. Excellent. Then we'll do that. I keep my running list, I'm keeping my running list of concerns here. If you find we don't talk about your concern at all by the time we're done, please put your hand up, let us know. Okay? Because we do want to make sure that if we don't respond, which I don't think there's anything we won't respond to, that was a conscious choice rather than an accident. I don't want to leave you high and dry. Okay, thank you. Would anyone else, please, again, come up, just share your name and your address and any thoughts you have?
Thank you. John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive. So in the warrant article, you do address zones 2 and 3, and my first question is, why was 2 and 3 chosen? My assumption is because they go onto individuals' private properties, but I don't know for sure, so I'm asking that as a clarifying question. And if indeed that is the reason that you did choose to just address zones 2 and 3, then why wasn't Zone 1 also addressed? Because Zone 1 on the Hickory Hills well does go into private property. So I'd like to have an answer for those two questions. And my final question would be, who is the originator or owner of the map? So when I talked to the Lunenburg Water District, they said they are not the owner of the map. So I assume somebody owns the map here, somebody's the originator and the owner. I would hope it to be the town, but I don't know for sure, so I'm asking that question. Thank you very much.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
Did they say who the owner of the map was?
They said they were not the owner of the map.
They did not say who?
But they did not say who, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we're going to have a map and a town warrant, I assume the town should own the map, but that's my assumption. So that's, you know, we'll wait for your answers. Thank you.
I think I know the answer to that, but we'll address them all at once, and I will consult, to make sure that my answer's correct as well, because I don't want to feed you wrong knowledge. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak or share? Please, come on up. And again, for those watching at home, I see we have a few on Zoom, do, when I ask that after our friend here speaks, please put your hand up if you want to speak as well, because you can speak through Zoom, Zoom, no problem.
Hi, my name is Iris Sinkel, and I live at 13 Winter Green Court. And I just want to make a comment that I support Joan Pease's concerns and her question and the clarification of Zone 1 on the map, and I'm here in support of that concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sinkel.
Thank you.
Would anyone else on Zoom as well or in the room wish to share a thought, concern, question? Going to give an extra moment for our friends on Zoom as well, just to give them a chance in case they're looking for the right hand up button, or any reaction will kind of tell us. All right, seeing none, I will tell our friends on Zoom, I know it can be tricky if you're not used to it, I have no idea if you're used to it. If you put your hand up at some other point, one of us will try to make a note, so we can loop back to you. So we've had, what I hear are a few concerns raised and questions. The ones that I think are maybe more straightforward would be about why were zones 2 and 3 chosen and not Zone 1, as well as, I believe, who owns the map is going to be a more straightforward question, but we'll see on that. And then we can also get into the concerns that have been raised about the, excuse me, about the legibility of the map and the fact that Zone 1 is not put in the warrant article. I believe we can get to some thoughts on why it's not in the warrant article and see if that meets your needs, and if not, we can discuss it and look forward, for sure. As for why Zone 2 and 3 were chosen, I believe I can answer that effectively, and I would encourage other board members to interrupt me and correct me if you disagree with anything I'm saying. And the, the short answer is Zone 2 and 3 were chosen because Zone 1 is not something the town needs to be administering or has really any need to be looking at in a legal sense. Zone 1 has been included in town bylaw, in previous water protection town bylaw, and in the past just shy of 10 years, when Adam Burney was the land use director here, not once has the town ever been contacted about Zone 1. The reason being that there are other agencies that also have authority over Zone 1, and they have frankly a more direct authority over Zone 1 and the ability to do things about it. And that would be the Water Supply District and the DEP. So Zone 1 is a legal thing that exists, but it isn't something the town takes jurisdiction over, because, at least in this new version, because, both because it hasn't been necessary for us to, and when other map changes and things were brought before town meeting before, a concern was brought about how is the town exactly going to handle Zone 1. And in review, the answer was, we really don't. It's not so much our purview as these other organizations. So that would be why Zone 1 is not included. Does it, can I just get a nod if that answers your question? Or, I just, I would love to make sure I'm answering thoroughly or correctly. I apologize. If you do want to speak, I'll ask you to come up to the microphone. I know. But that's where, that's where everyone at home can hear you as well, and that's where it's recorded for the meeting.
So your initial question, does that answer my question? No, I'm not sure what authority the Water District has as its own municipality. It doesn't have, you know, any type of policing force or anything like that, so it's not clear to me. They would fall back to the DEP, I am sure, as anybody could fall back to the DEP. So, and again, and I, in most places, the Lancaster wells, the wells at Keatings, those are all, the land around those wells is all owned by the Lunenburg Water District.
Mm-hmm.
In Hickory Hills, the land around those, that well is all owned by Hickory Hills Land Owners, Inc. So what has happened there is Lunenburg Water District has come, they have placed a well and said, okay, now we're going to control our 400 feet around it on other people's private property. And I don't think that's something that can be done. I'm sure legally it's not done, and that's why I'm asking the town, it's like, okay, by following along what they have done there, you're, you're basically agreeing with it and saying they have control over that, so therefore we don't. And that's, that's where I'm a little bit uncomfortable. And that's, and it's that particular instance, it's only the Hickory Hills well, and, you know, this is just, it's going to come to a head at some point in time. But this came up last year, as you well know, we went through the voting, Hickory Hills voted against it because what they, what was tried to be done then is no boating or fishing or anything could be done in Zone 1. So I think it's convenient that that's being left out this year, Zone 1, but it still leaves us uncomfortable.
Okay. What, what I will respond to that is we don't have control over how DEP, we have no influence over DEP having control over that land. That is, to my understanding, a matter of state law, and so that is, we can't touch that one way or another.
But, but DEP also has control over Zone 2 and 3. Right, you followed some DEP input, I'm sure, for the wording for zones 2 and 3?
We did, but I believe it's a different level. Mr. Harris may be able to help us with this, our.
And I don't want to argue with, I'm just, I'm trying to give you my point.
I, I hear you. I, I want to try to address your concerns to the best of our ability. If it comes off as argumentative, I do apologize.
No, no, and I don't want to.
Okay.
Of as argumentative either.
Great, I think we're on the same page here.
Great, thank you.
Which is pleasant. Mr. Harris, could you help us understand the legality and the setup behind this a little bit more and how this operates?
Mass DEP requires the Zone 1 to be regulated and controlled by the well operator. They have advisory and suggestions on what needs to be done on Zones 2 and 3, more stronger on 2 than 3. As you get further away from the well, DEP is less adamant about what needs to be done. But 1, in some communities, they don't regulate, they just say whatever's required in the Mass DEP regulations, that governs, and they leave it at that. And my understanding by not proposing to regulate Zone 1, that's essentially what this proposed bylaw would do, is they'll defer to Mass DEP for Zone 1 and use local discretion to regulate Zone 2 and 3, or Zone 2.
So Ms. Pease, I do see you, and I just want to finish up here quickly, and then we will absolutely come to you. So that, that's the answer for Mr. Harris as well, for some more technical background that I can give you.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pease, please come up. And I'm sorry, I did get his piece, correct?
It is Joan Pease, yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, the, the town has had, over the past year, some involvement with its citizens that has been less than positive. There have been misunderstandings with various boards, I'm not saying you, I'm just saying, that have resulted in lots of problems, misunderstandings, redoing of things. And one of the things that makes government shine, in my opinion, is when it is crystal clear to its citizens and 100% transparent. And so I feel that your present warrant article is fuzzy, leaves things up to the imagination or to the concern of citizens, and I would urge you to say, just state it right out, that this warrant article has zero jurisdiction over Zone 1, and that the Planning Board is not enacting any regulations in Zone 1s, and remove the Zone 1 from your map. Basically, that's what I'm hearing if I listen to your gentleman on Zoom. And I would say, let's be 100% clear with our citizens, let's be 100% transparent and say what we mean. So put a statement in there that the regulations do not, the Planning Board regulations do not apply to any Zone 1s, and remove the Zone 1s from the map that is cited in the regulation.
Thank you. I, I absolutely hear you on that. A concern that comes to mind for me when I think of this is if we were to remove Zone 1s, that would make them part of Zone 2?
We can't do that.
Because, and that's, because then they would be within Zone 2. But again, Mr. Harris may be able to help us with some of this as well. As far as wording for, we are not regulating Zone 1, I don't know how common it is to say what we're not doing, and if that's appropriate in bylaws.
Well, you don't have to say what you're not doing. In the Zone 1 section of the thing, you can say no regulations, no Planning Board regulations, that's all.
If that would be appropriate.
I have a suggestion for the map. You can have a better map that everyone can read, and you can say that Zone 2 begins at the end of the red circles and goes to whatever the border is. So you can easily solve the map problem, that, that's not an issue. But again, I, I think it's important to make your citizens feel secure in what they are voting on, and to have a map that specifies a Planning Board Zone 1, because that map is referenced in Section D. It says this map is part of the warrant article, and therefore the map is designating a Planning Board Zone 1. If that is your intention, then you should say it to the voters, we are designating a Planning Board Zone 1, and we're not specifying what we control in that area, which I think is very fuzzy, unclear, and no one should vote for. Or say Zone 2 begins at the outside of the red circle and goes to whatever this border is, and here are the regulations for Zone 2, here are the regulations for Zone 3, the Planning Board is not enacting any of its regulations in Zone 1. DEP, Water District's a whole other story, but we're here tonight only because of the Planning Board warrant article, and that's my recommendation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Pease. Mr. Harris, I would, I would ask you, because I actually don't know, in terms of the map, I, I hear about, I hear about the map being unclear, and it would, I can, I can absolutely look into having for town meeting better copies made of, more clear copies made available. I will look into that for sure, because I see the map, I see why that is a difficulty. Mr. Harris, how do other communities handle maps like this in kind of our scenario where they're not regulating Zone 1? Is this in line? Does this seem, I might, I believe town council reviewed this to be secure, but I'm not 100% off the top of my head, so I'll take your thoughts on it for sure.
I think it's consistent with it. Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3 are areas designated by Mass DEP. They identify what they are, and some communities simply define Zone 1 as the 400-foot radius as defined by Mass DEP. Zone 2 is as Mass DEP saying, that they reference the Mass DEP designation, and those are what's applied. I'd be cautious about saying that no Planning Board regulations apply.
Fair.
Because that would be overstatement. For instance, subdivision regulations apply. Everything outside of the Water Supply Protection District portions on the bylaw would still apply. So I think I don't want to say no regulations, just that the Water Supply District regulations do not propose to apply to that Zone 1.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Just making some notes for myself for conversation topics, so we don't lose topics. All right, so another question would be who, the other All right. Um, so, uh, another question would be who, the other question I want to make sure we come back to is who owns the map? And it was my, my understanding, the map is furnished by DEP, but I guess I'm not a hundred percent on that, as I thought maybe I was. Mr. Harris, do you have an answer for who owns the map?
Well, it becomes the town's zoning bottle, zoning map. It's overlay district on the zoning map, therefore it would, it wouldn't go to town to own that, because it's, uh, your zoning map. Uh, but who originates it is Mass DEP.
Okay, so the map, the map was furnished by DEP, and then we, um, in the event that we adopt it, it becomes owned by, the map is owned by the ta, owned, quote, by the town in that it becomes part of our bylaws.
Right. Uh, if you go on Mass GIS, you'll see they have down, download layers in, uh, GIS layers you can download. They have layers one and two, Zones One and Two, that you can download and see what they look like. Um, they don't have Zone Three posted on there, because they're not as concerned by Zone Three as they used to be. I will note we do have a comment, a question raised in chat.
Uh, you said there's a, you said there's questions raised in the chat?
Yes, uh, Jack and Ann Denny Brown?
Uh, uh, just as a matter of clarification, can we accept questions in chat? I, I don't think we've done it before, but if we can, I have no problem with it.
You can submit written comments. Uh, I would always recommend that people submit them outside of chat, because that becomes a problematic, uh, venue. Because sometimes people put a lot of stuff in chat that shouldn't be there.
That's fair.
Yeah, and sometimes I chatted and I didn't want it public either, so.
Yeah.
They did raise their hand, though.
Oh, okay, we did have someone raising-
That's valid.
Okay. So we have someone raising our hand. I'd love to hear from them as well at home. And, uh, do, I think, I, yes, I think, uh, Mr. Harris, I think with the town setup, you have to be the one as host to unmute them. And who was the people who we saw?
It was Jack and Ann.
Okay.
I didn't see my hand raised, that's one, Jen.
Oh, okay.
I've asked them to unmute.
That's all he can do.
That's all he can?
He can ask them to unmute, but they have to unmute.
They've unmuted and they're, they're speaking.
There we go. Um, you, uh, Jack and Ann Denny Brown, you have the microphone.
Yes.
Oh, and we, thank you. And we do need your address. Uh, with apologies, we don't hear you right now, so if you are speaking, uh, you are unmuted in Zoom, but you might, depending upon the microphone you use, also have a hardware mute feature that you might have to disable separately.
Can they put their address in the chat? Can they enter their address in the chat and then read their comment?
Um, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Harris about that. The question was brought up, can we, can we, they put their address in the, name and address in the chat, and then we can read their comment? I don't, I don't know the line here of what is considered proper protocol, because I know in the past we just haven't done it through there. And I don't-
That's a board, that's a board to decide.
Yeah.
All right. I really want to hear what people have to say, but I don't want to step on any, like-
Go away.
-potential landmines, but if we can't think of a reason.
Yeah.
Okay. In that case, um, if you do, uh, it sounds like, uh, they put their question to Ja, uh, question or comment into chat. If you could give us your name and address as well into chat, then, uh, Mr. Harris could read it to us, as another option.
There's a, they put in their 15 Wintergreen court, and the question they asked, what would be changed with the proposed amendment for the Code of Lunenburg regarding the Water Supply Protection District?
What would be changed? Is that what's?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there are, I can, I can look up my summary, uh, to give you some of that, if you can give me one moment. Um, you have access to the full warrant article itself, but I do have, I may need a moment to find that file. Um, but I don't want to, I can give you a very general answer, but if you want a more specific list, I will look for that. Um, overall, what the warrant article is doing is removing the town from claiming control over the water supply for Zone One, because state law, as Mr. Harris talked about, puts that, that puts that in the Water District, and then funneling back to DEP. Uh, Zone Two and Three are having some changes. In the overall synopsis of that is, our, uh, current bylaw is 20, 30 years old, and water supply protection standards have changed, and the technology of how we build and do things has changed. So this brings it up to, this brings it up to the current standard, uh, as suggested by DEP. And overall, what we're doing is main, at least maintaining equal environmental protection, and I think there's a very fair argument that in many instances, we're actively improving it in Zone Two or Three, while also increasing property owner rights and letting people do more things with their property by being, using kind of our current understanding through the DEP, uh, of some activities that were before considered inappropriate, then now look at and say, that's actually okay. Or things like changes in permeable area, where we used to have a set absolute, I think it was 15%, I'll have to check, of you, you, if you went, you could not go over a certain amount of impermeable area. Now, we're saying, again, keeping with modern standards, you may go over that impermeable area if and only if you are appropriately mitigating so that you are still getting the correct water infiltration. Um, and there's some other changes along those lines to bring it up, again, up to modern environmental regulations. In doing many of these is increasing the uses people have with their property, because it turns out engineering technology is wonderful that way. Um, in my opinion, anyway. That would be my summary of the changes. Um, I know the ma, I believe the map has some fine-scale changes as well. I don't know those off the top of my head. Uh, would you agree with those assessments, add anything, or disagree with part of it?
I would agree.
So currently, our use regulation, Section C of the 255, 4.9, Section C, uh, parent two, uses permissible in restricted areas, Zone One, by special permit granted by the planning board, blah, blah, blah. I think that goes away, right?
Yeah, Zone One goes away. We don't-
Well, I mean, that's the use regulation, um-
Well, yeah, let me rephrase. Our, our, uh, our administration and control over Zone One goes away, because it's actually given to it, it's actually by state law, another group. I should be, we don't eliminate Zone One, because we can't do that legally. Um, Ms. Pease, I do see you, I do want to make sure I get to you, but I just want to make sure our thoughts appear on this as we kind of filter through or complete, then we will absolutely get to you.
I, I, I've, I've said from the start that I didn't think this was ready to go to town meeting, quite honestly.
Yep.
Um, I really don't. I think it was a slap in the face to the voters who voted the map down last year. Um, and it's just a sneaky, underhanded way to try to get back onto the warrant. Um, but I will also say that, um, since 1939, the Water District has been totally separate from the town of Lunenburg. They've got their own board, they have their own meetings. Um, and this is really their article, and because they are their own thing, and they're not part of town government, we had to present this article. So this really technically is, I mean, if you want to get down to the dotted i's and crossed t's, this is the planning board article, but this is not a planning board article, so to speak, because nobody in town controls the Water District except for the Water District Commissioners and the Board of Directors of the Water Commission since 1939. And I do have a couple of questions about, um, the, when, when was the Hickory Hills well installed versus when was the Hickory Hills Landowners Association created? Can somebody answer that for me?
Hmm. And we do, do we need people's names each time? Is that correct, or no?
John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive.
Hasn't changed.
Okay. I, for the purposes of minutes, I don't know what they want.
No, that's fine.
And that's all.
John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive, President of Hickory Hills Landowners, Inc. So Hickory Hills Landowners was incorporated in 1978. The well was worked on in the mid-eighties, and I think came into, uh, use in the early nineties. I don't have exact dates. I have 1986 as one of the dates where a lot of the information was flowing, but I don't believe it was till the early, early nineties when it, uh, came into use.
It was worked on or it was installed?
Uh, was built, and I don't know if you know the date.
I have it all at home. Joan Pease, I have all the-
Yeah, I don't know the exact date.
... things at home. I did not bring them with me, but I believe, um, I believe that Hickory Hills Landowners was, uh, predated by Hickory Hills Lake Association, and I believe all the legal documents passed straight over from one to the other. So therefore, I would say Hickory Hills in either the form of lake or landowners had the property prior to the well being dug and any easements being given and any water being taken.
However, the well has been shut down for many, many years because of high manganese and iron. So it has not been an issue until recently, when the Lunenburg Wa, when the Water District has begun working on a plan to bring that back, uh, up and running. So that's why nothing's happened with the well, which I'm sure is going to be one of your further questions, recently, and that, that's why. It's, it's only just started. So the well is still not in use today. Uh, there is a plan by the Water District to bring the use into, uh, to bring the well into use. Okay? Is that it to your question?
Um, yeah, to the best of your ability, I guess. I mean, you, you say that the Landowners Association was created in 78, but that there's a Lake Owners Association, a Lake Association previous to that? Was that in 78?
Yes, 1952.
Fifty-two.
1952.
Okay.
It was right around there.
Okay.
Before my time. Maybe you guys remember.
Before my time, too.
All right.
Seventy-eight wasn't.
And, uh, and Ms. Pease, I do know you want to speak. I, I will come to you next, absolutely. But, uh, I do want to push back, Mr. Allison, on a comment you made, because, um, you may have meant, meant it differently than I, I understood, but you discussed this warrant article as being a sneaky, underhanded way to get things in, and-
That's not the first time I've said it.
I, I just, I disagree in that I feel, now, if you're discussing about the way the Water District handles, handles things, I'd be interested to hear that thought, if you have one. But I feel that we've been straightforward in this process, and I, I feel that we, as a board, have been diligent in discussing it openly at meetings and doing everything we're supposed to do with it. So if you feel that we've done, if, I, I actually admit, I take some offense at the notion that we've been sneaky and underhanded, but I'm open to hearing your thoughts on it, because I absolutely respect your opinion as well.
It was not at all the intention, not about the board members here, um, not about anybody in the audience. It was about the powers that be that, that make these warrant articles, that, that write these booklets, that run our meetings, that, that screw things up sometimes, that leave things out. Uh, we'll find later that the AgCon warrant article didn't even make the, the thing, because the Water Supply Protection District got double billing. So I don't think we can even see that at the town meeting. Um, I'm really disgusted by the way this town is being run, quite honestly, in a lot of ways. So sneaky and underhanded might have been a little bit harsh, but, I mean, it was just last year that this was voted down, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah. But it was only the map. Now, the other sneaky and underhanded thing that I think is going on here is that we were told by the previous land use director that they can't even look at a certain piece of property without having these regulations changed. That's a little bit weird, in my opinion. As a regulator, looking out for the best interest of the town of Lunenburg, I don't think that's the right way to do things, but that's just one person's opinion.
I absolutely hear your thoughts. I, I would disagree. Uh, I came away from the previous land use, uh, from similar discussions with the previous land use director with a, a different interpretation of that, but I understand where your interpretation comes from as well.
Okay.
So, um, all right. Well, thank you. I, I, I do appreciate the clarification, because if, if you had an issue, I'd want to hear it.
You'll hear it.
Oh, yeah. I'm not really worried about it. Um, Ms. Pease, thank you very much for your patience. I just wanted to make sure that that topic was addressed as well.
As a general principle, I try and avoid speaking to people's motivation, because it gets people's dander up, and none of us can really get in someone else's head. However, I have to say that taking motivation out of it and just looking at face value at what the voters are being presented with, I have to agree with Mr. Allison, that this is not clear and transparent. Last year, the voters did vote this down, and I've had several people contact me this week and say, what gives? We just voted this down. Didn't they get the message? Do we have to show up and force again? Why are they doing this so soon? Why is Zone One on the map and not in the narrative? That is a big problem. That is an inconsistency. The warrant article actually says, this map, which can be found in the clerk's office, is part of this warrant article in Section D. It is not okay to have a map in there that creates a Zone One, and then, guess what? We didn't say anything about it. Not clear, not transparent, not fair to the voters. And so while I will refrain from assigning motivation, I have to say, this is not a clear-cut, understandably organized, prepared warrant article. I do not feel it should be going to town meeting in the condition that it is presently in. I feel the map needs work, the wording needs work, and we need to figure out how to make it clear to the voters what this warrant article does for Zone One. I, I mean, I'm sure we can find various words that will make it clear and transparent. Maybe we want to say this warrant article does not have any restrictions for Zone One. Just this warrant article does not have any restrictions for Zone. But the way it is, is not transparent, clear government, showing a respect for the intelligence and the will of the voter.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pease. Uh, and I, I thank you for your patience as well.
Hi, um, I'm still Iris Sinkel at 13 Wintergreen, and, um, I would like to concur with Mr. Allison. This whole Water District project, I feel, has been done with no care or consideration for the residents of Woodlands or for the residents around Hickory Hills Lake. I feel that the Water District has acted in bad faith with us as residents, as, and as people who are going to be directly affected by what they do. And when you say that it's not part of your thing, and the town selectmen say it's not part of their thing, and the Water District is its own entity, where do the citizens go to have any say in what happens to our lives?
Um-
No, I didn't.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing I can tell, I can't speak for the Water District. I can tell you that in discussions on the board, we have, there have been discussions during drafting and everything else, trying to be thoughtful about Hickory Hills, and that was part of doing things like leaving Zone One out. I hear the concern that it, whether or not legally, just not mentioning Zone One is perfectly adequate, it may not feel great that way. And so, um, we can turn to Mr. Harris as well, see if there- And so we can turn to Mr. Harris as well, see if there, again, what wording may work. And I think he suggested something earlier, but I want to make sure I understand that correctly. I can't speak for other members of the board. I will speak for myself when I say that when having this brought to us and then needing to put our touch on it to put it forward, the concern has absolutely been about every resident of this town who relies on water, who relies on these wellheads and in those living around them. And that's why we've tried to both be sensitive about the environment and give back as many use rights as possible to residents rather than saying, no, you just can't do this. And that, again, that's been using the DEP standards. We haven't been flying off the cuff with that and making up ideas. But I do hear your concern and I hear why it's frustrating as well. Mr. Harris, is there wording we could possibly, if we're looking at amending this anyway on the floor due to some Scrivener's errors, is there, is there language we could potentially put in to be clear about zone one?
I think you could. I think under scope of authority, section B, you could state that nothing in two fifty five, two fifty dash four point nine imposes any regulations on property within zone one and leave it at that. That would make it very clear that nothing Water Supply Protection District regulates zone one.
And Ms. Pease, I would turn to you just because you've been the one to speak most on it, but I would have turned to everyone as well, but I suspect you'll have an opinion.
Certainly, that's a move in the right direction. I still have concerns about the map and it's illegible and impossible to read, so I don't know what you're going to do about that since it's already been published. But that's moving in the right direction for sure. I don't know if other people have concerns about your zone two and zone three proposed regulations, but my main concern is that there be a consistent presentation to the voters between the map and the narrative, that they agree with each other and everyone understands what they're voting for. So that would be definitely moving in the right direction.
Thank you. And this map is available at town clerk's office. If memory serves, don't take this as absolute word, but I believe there was some discussion on the, and I can't remember where, if it was at a select board meeting I heard it or maybe, I don't want to go assigning and saying these people were there because I'm really not, I recall a discussion about, well, for things this big, they often are available at town clerks and then the map is given so people have an idea and they can go get more info, in part because giving a full map of the town of Lunenburg may not be feasible for this communication method. It's also possible we may be able to put it out via other avenues as well.
If you're going to have a map cited as part of a warrant article, which then becomes law when people vote on it, I feel you have a responsibility and a duty to present an accurate, clear map to the voting public ahead of time, not expecting people to go to the town clerk's, all however many citizens you have in town who are concerned. That is why I went to the select board meeting last week, but the map that is printed is completely illegible and, in my opinion, useless is the way it's presented.
Thank you, Ms. Pease. And Mr. Harris is letting us know he can speak to us and I'd love to hear it.
I would offer one additional suggestion. Definitions you define zones, zone two and zone three, you could put a similar definition of zone one. So if you put in the authority that nothing in this section applies regulations to zone one and then go in definitions and define zone one the same way you have two and three, whether people can read the map, not, I understand the benefit of reading the map, but it's become really tough on the size of the town to have a four hundred foot radius circle identified and illegible. But if you defined zone one in the definitions, I think there'd be very clear understanding. This is on one, two, and three, and one isn't going to be regulated by this section.
Absolutely. Thank you. And we, Ms. Pease, we do have others who I think we're looking, Ms. Pease, we do have others, we do have others who are looking to speak as well. So I'm not trying to be rude. I apologize. Just, I want to share the microphone. I'm sorry. Please.
My name is Deborah Ritchie. I live at ninety-eight Royal Fern Drive in Lunenburg. When you were speaking just previous to some of the input from residents, you had made a comment about that you were putting this forth because the water concerns everybody in the town and that it was not, you know, even though people are concerned about Hickory Hills residents, it concerns the whole town. The thing that I'm concerned about is a few years ago, the water department came to the town wanting to sell water to other towns. They were not given the right, but they did come forward. So how did we become so, in such a short time, a need for water and this well to be reopened to service everybody in town when they wanted to sell it? So I feel that's sort of disingenuous, genuine, when you say that, you know, it's because of people in the town you serve to say that you're doing this, you know, because the water department came forward saying that there was a need for more water. They were willing to sell it off several years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. I do, I should clarify my statement. When I was speaking, I was trying to speak about my underst, my personal motivation as well as my understanding of the general motivation of the planning board and what I got from discussions we've had. I cannot speak for the Water District's intention. I don't know those and I have no jurisdiction over that whatsoever. So I apologize if it comes across as disingenuous. I'm trying to share my understanding of the board's actions. Again, I can't speak for the Water District. Please.
So was it purely your interest in rewriting the, these warrants for the planning boards, having any interaction over zone one? Or were you approached by anybody other than people on the planning board to redo the map for zones one, two, and three?
Was that a, the map redo is provided by the state, isn't it? Or by D.
I've got a little bit of a litany that I might be able to shed some light on process, but it, it's, people get these notions in their mind that we control everything in our town and we don't.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. Are you finished?
I am. I will, I didn't know if I wanted to have a question.
You'd be more than welcome to step back up, but I'd like to make some clarifying statements here. And again, anything that I have to say right now is to the best of my knowledge and understanding. I have a twenty-five-year career as a civil engineer. I've worked hand in hand with DEP on many, many projects. I have a fairly good understanding about DEP, environmental policies, wells and whatnot. Zone one, two, and three are, I believe zone one and two are regulated primarily by the state. And if the state regulates something, we don't have the ability to alleviate their regulation. We can regulate more strict than the state does, but we can't become more lenient than the state is. So the Water District is another issue. It's been a thorn in the side in many ways and it's been a benefit in some ways. It doesn't, it doesn't cost taxpayers, so it's a pay as you throw, so to speak. If you use it, you pay for it. If you don't, you don't. So, but it's a public water supply and it's for the entire town and they have a handful of wells around town. And they don't just decide, oh, we're going to take this much out today and we're going to take that much out tomorrow and we can do it at our leisure. They don't. They have permits that they have to apply to the state for. The state is very strict and they require conformance to their permits. So this is, again, this is for twelve thousand residents of the town of Lunenburg, not necessarily for all twelve thousand, but those who gain water from the Water District, so to speak, which potentially can't even be the whole town because the town is not included in, the entirety of the town is not included in the supply map, which is another oddity in my mind, but neither here nor there. There's a lot of them. They had to come to us to present this as a zoning article at town meeting because that's what we do, that's not what they do. And this is being told to them, they are being dictated, to provide water to the citizens of Lunenburg that are in the Water District, they have to do X, Y, and Z. This could be part of X, part of Y, part of Z, part of something in between. I don't know, but they didn't come to us because they wanted to do it. They came to us because the stick was coming down on them. And that's exactly how I feel the state treats our town. Carrot and stick, and it's mostly stick. So that being said, this, this is a, we're doing this as a pleasantry, I suppose, for a quasi-public entity that doesn't have the ability to present this article, as far as I can tell. And yeah, we went over and hemmed and hawed about a few things, but I don't think we made a whole lot of difference in what was presented to us.
Very little.
No. And quite honestly, I don't really think that it, it does matter, but you know, the Keating's well is recent and was it eighteen, twenty eighteen-ish?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So there was issues about the acquisition of that well. It wasn't town property. It was taken by the town or however it got into the Water District's control. There were people that were involved in the drilling of that well back in the sixties or the fifties, whenever it was, and they said, that's a problem. They brought it up to the town fathers, which at that time, the Board of Selectmen. Point seven? That's not a big deal. The limit's one. So, and I'm not going to get into details about it, but I believe that the concern for water was before we acquired the Keating's well, and I believe that after we got the Keating's well, there was discussion about selling water to Lancaster, who is in a budding community and their residents probably less than ten thousand, they need water just as much as we do. If we have excess capacity, then it makes sense to share. It would have been an inter municipal agreement, right, IMA, for the town of Lunenburg to provide water to the town of Lancaster, and it would have been a tri-party agreement in my understanding because the Water District is not part of the town. So I think I touched on most of the things that were mentioned here. Withdrawal permit. So if they, if they pull out ten thousand gallons a day from that well, probably closer to a hundred thousand gallons, they need to have a permit that allows them for such capacity. And the greater the capacity, the greater the restrictions from the state DEP. It's not them telling us that we need to change our regulations. It's not us saying that we need to change our regulations. It's the state telling us that we need to conform. So it, it, I guess, I guess we're getting a stick from the state. I guess it really shouldn't matter which group it comes from because no groups in town have the ability to say, no, don't stop sticking us because we just don't. If the state tells us we have to do it, one way or another, we're going to have to do it eventually. What they said was that this was a requirement of their current withdrawal permit. Their current withdrawal or their, their application to increase the withdrawal? I don't recall. I'm not a commissioner for the Water District, but that was my understanding. And this was their requirement from DEP to the Water District. Now, that was last year. They were required to submit some changes and that was all that they were required to do. The state can't mandate the town vote in a certain way, but they can mandate that we try, and we did. So I don't know what the next stick is going to be, but it's probably not going to be very pleasant. I tried to figure out a definition for zone one, but again, the state is fuzzy, so that might, that might transfer into a little bit of fuzziness from us as well because this isn't our forte. This is not what we do. But again, I mean, just, just for the larger scale process, this is not something we asked for, this is not something we are extremely knowledgeable about. This is within our forte to present this article. And as a citizen of the town and a member of the Water District, I get water at my own private residence and I'm not super happy with the speed which this has gone through. And I'll repeat it, I'm not happy that it was kind of shoved in, I don't know what page it was, but the same map that got defeated last year. Not happy about that, but it, again, this is what the state wants us to do. So in, in, in looking at the twelve thousand population of town versus the five hundred residences of the Hickory Hills Landowners Association, I, I would have to say that I'm in favor of passing townwide regulations, but I'm not in favor of hurting any individual or special interest group or especially the, the special interest group of the twelve thousand inhabitants of the town of Lunenburg. And I'll get off my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
I just have two very quick points. I just wanted to remind the people watching on Zoom, I did see a hand raised earlier. If you are unable to find the raise hand feature in Zoom, please type in the comment section your name and address as well as your question and Mr. Harris should be able to read it to the board and to the room. And back to the concern of the map that Mrs. Pease brought up, I have done a lot of work with the FDA in my life and if you miss a period at the end of the sentence or if your three doesn't really look like a three, your document will be denied by them. So I do understand giving the people in the town a map that is illegible in the town warrant, that doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. They're not going to get the information that they need. Yes, it is at town hall. I don't know if it's on the website. I'm not, you know, if it's not easily accessible for people to read when they're given this quality, then it doesn't make sense that they would be favorable to voting on it at town meeting. That's my soapbox.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I am, while we're chatting, I am trying to check the town website and see if there is a copy of the map there. I see Ms. Pease mouthing to me, it's not.
At least it wasn't.
I, I well believe that. I'm going to look for myself in cases there or in cases somewhere weird, but Mr. Harris has his hand up as well. And then Ms. Pease, I know you've been jumping at the bit. I just want to turn to our technical expert and then you will be next.
I just want to bring up that Jack and Danny Brown submitted two other comments and one they, I'm not sure if you couldn't hear them, and the last comment they had was, we think the public should see the list of specific changes.
All right. Thank you for that feedback. It's a little hard because we're rewriting the entire thing, so there's not a line item. It's a delete and replace. For town meeting at least, I will certainly have that available in our slides. Ms. Pease, thank you very much for your patience. I know you have a few things to go through now and I appreciate that.
You know, I think it's important that we remember why we're here and I have a lot of feelings about the Water District, the town and everything else, but I'm here only for this warrant article right now. And, and I'm focusing on this particular warrant article and I want to make sure I heard and understood correctly. This warrant article came from the Water District to you. Is that what I heard?
Well, that's what I said, but actually technically it came from the previous land use director to us, right? And he said it came from them, is my recollection.
That sound, I don't, I do not know how much of the wording came from Water District giving to us versus them being told what to do and then our previous land use director using the DEP's model to put this, I don't know exactly where that line falls. using the DEP's model to put this, I don't know exactly where that line falls off the top of my head, because I know that we did have some back and forth with the Water District, where once we had it, they gave additional comment and said, "This looks good," or "This should work."
I would ask before the town meeting that we know exactly where it came from, because the origin of the ideas is always important. And if it came from Mr. Bernie, who used to be the land use person, that's one thing, if it came from the Water District, that's, people may have different questions. That being said, I guess your expert, is it Mr. Harrison, is that what you said?
Harris.
Harris, Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris made a two-part suggestion. And if I understand it correctly, in Section B, he would add a phrase that says, "There is no Zone 1 regulation in this act," in this act, in this warrant article. And under the definitions, at the end of the definitions, where it has a definition of Zone 2 and Zone 3, he would define Zone 1, so people could know where it was, that there was nothing in this warrant article covering it.
Correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
That is my understanding as well. Mr. Harris, you could say if that's a correct assessment of what you said.
Well, I'd say that under applicability, I would say that nothing in Section 250-4.9 imposes regulations on properties in Zone 1.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also want to note that if you go to the Assessor's online GIS map, there is a Aquifer map, and Zone 1, 2, and 3 are identified on there.
All right.
So, what I was going to say is that I appreciate and could support this if those two changes were made in the warrant article, so that we, A, say that this warrant article does not cover any regulations for Zone 1, and B, we define what Zone 1 is, and then we supply a transparent map that people can actually read.
Thank you, Ms. Pease. Now, the way, I would be, so that's an amendment when I hear it, I'm personally comfortable with putting forward. I don't know how we feel, I don't remember the, I don't know if it should be lumped with the Scrivener's errors or not, but I don't see why it wouldn't be, because it's just adding clarification without changing content. But, I don't know what others on the board think, and I would solicit Mr. Harris's opinion as well, but once we know if that was something we were thinking about doing, how might be best to accomplish that? And we might just have not to.
I had the first town council's legal opinion, but from my experience, given the scope of the article they've got, that says we're going to repeal the existing one and insert a new 4.9, I think all those could fit in within the scope of that warrant article. And it would simply clarify applicability and clarify a definition. So, the not necessary Scrivener errors, but the clarifying amendments.
All right.
So, to your initial question about how to approach it at town meeting, my recommendation would be to take town council's recommendation with this very simplified two sentences, right, on the, "Take this and change it to that, take this and change it to that," in the communication that we had, right? So, I think that that would be something that, on the introduction of this warrant article, by whoever presents it at town meeting, should make a motion for that, right at the outset, and then have that amendment voted on and approved or disapproved. And if that's disapproved, then we should just withdraw the article, because the article as it was written and as it was published is not correct. So, if they're not going to allow us to correct the Scrivener's error, then we should find out right away, and then this article goes away. Now, that would be Amendment 1, at the outset. And now, I would recommend that either somebody, Ms. Pease, or someone from that group, present an amendment as a second amendment at, on the town floor, and you can probably write it out beforehand, or write it out at the meeting, you know how you have to write the amendment out on the sheet of paper at the town meeting? So, I would recommend there being a second amendment planned already, right now, for the article. And then we could vote on that, yea or nay.
That's right, the amendment doesn't have to come from us, but I am putting together, I am putting together the board's presentation for town meeting tomorrow. And Ms. Pease, if you were interested in making that amendment at town meeting for Zone 1, I would be very happy to work with you to have slides ready-made to put it forward and communicate it clearly, if we think that's a good way to go about it.
I would be more comfortable with having the planning board bring that forth. And I would be more comfortable if it was included as, Ms. Reed, is this Reed is correct, stated that it's a minor change maybe, and it could be included in the script changes, if town council allows that, rather than making it cumbersome and over, well, we're going to have two amendments, I mean, how long, I just think it, the clearest, simplest way for the citizens is always the best way, most transparent, clearest, simplest way. Should that become a necessity, I'm not saying I won't do that, but I'm just saying I think that clarity can be achieved in a much more streamlined, less cumbersome manner.
I am very, I'm comfortable putting forward the amendment, but I wanted to offer that to you, since you're the one who brought forward the concerns, so that you could make sure that it was, when I say to your liking, I mean, to make sure it mitigated those concerns appropriately. I'm comfortable putting forward that amendment as well.
I think that the wording suggested by Mr. Harris was fine.
And I would absolutely steal his wording, because I am no...
Wordsmith?
Well, I'm a wordsmith, just not a legal wordsmith. And I actually want to just take a moment to thank everyone on Zoom, and in person as well, for being here tonight and having the patience to hash this out, along with the additional challenge of how would we look at an amendment for this, so that we can try to make the best possible product for the town. And the end is up to the town, up to those who attend town meeting. Everyone should attend town meeting, as I, but I very much appreciate the patience and willingness to engage in this process, so that we can try to make the best product for the town, as it can get tense and difficult with back and forth, but this is why we're a democracy, so we can make that kind of progress. All right, I have, so, we've talked about map issues. Mr. Harris has put forward that the map is available through the, and you can see where these zones lie, through, I forget the map, yeah, through the assessors, and from the assessors on the webpage, you would, what's the name of the map program?
Access GIS.
GIS, thank you. I know it when I need it, and otherwise...
Access GIS has our Lunenburg GIS.
So, that the map as proposed is already in the GIS, so town residents can get it there, and what, yeah, that's right, yeah, and what I would encourage people to do is spread that word as well. I can put out, I can make a comment about, on Facebook or something, to let people know, "Hey, you might want to look here for info," but I think it's, rather than coming from a government official, it's great if it comes from other people, too. So, I would encourage us to share that info, so people can digitally really get down to brass tacks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Mr. Harris.
If you want me to, I can share my screen and show people where it is on the website.
That would be, if you, we can do, I don't know how to get there, are you comfortable sharing your screen, or would you like me to?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Well, while he's doing that, I can go ahead and tell you that the map that's online right now is the 2009 map that's currently acknowledged and accepted and enforced in town. This is a proposed map, this is not going to show up on our GIS.
Oh, but this is, on our GIS, is probably the MassDEP database.
Mr. Harris, again, this, the...
It's a different map.
Yeah, the DEP map should show our town-approved 2009 map that's referenced in our current zoning regulations.
But the warrant article references a 2021 map, which is a different map.
Yes, we, that, yep.
Let me stop this then. Stop.
No, so this is the map that we're trying to vote in. The map that we were replacing is the currently voted-in map that's currently shown on our GIS.
Most, most GIS...
Good, sorry.
Most GIS databases take it straight from MassGIS sites, and that's why MassDEP generates.
Was that an ask?
Could you repeat yourself, Mr. Harris? It is a little, it's not much, but it is a little garbled on this end.
Most online GIS databases, when they show the Zone 1, Zone 2, and other databases, they're taking it straight from the MassGIS database, and the MassGIS database shows the current DEP data, whether it's adopted locally or not, it shows what MassDEP has on there.
These two maps, one is 2009, the other is 2021, are not the same. The one referenced in the warrant article is during 2021.
Thank you, sir.
I got them both here.
I don't know if anybody can see them, but I've got them both here, they're not the same. The one referenced in the warrant article is 2021, this is the 2009 from GSI, they're not the same maps.
So, thank you, Ms. Pease. What we are trying to assess here is, Mr. Allison was saying that the information, he believes the information in GIS is from the 2009 map, and Mr. Harris was saying that, in general, GIS databases draw from the current DEP map, which would be the 2021. And I think Mr. Allison and myself as well are kind of looking to see if we can get a clarification on which map GIS is using, so we're not sending people to that 2009 map, which is not the same.
We'll get clarified some.
What was that?
We need clarified some around next week.
Yeah. What I am going to do is, let me put down a to-do for myself for tomorrow, that I do want to see if we can get, if there is a way we can get this map more widely spread, hearing this concern. Now, I can't get us a big, appropriately, like giant-sized copy mail to everyone, but see if we can get this information out into the town, at least digitally as well as we can, to try to get this information out to help the voters, because I do hear your concern. And I am a big fan of when in doubt, give everyone more information, and so long as we're not giving them useless, but giving them everything pertinent, so they can make educated choices. So, I'm going to follow up and see if there is a digital, see what we can do to get a digital copy available. The answer may be, we can direct people to GIS, the answer may be that there's a PDF somewhere we can send. I can't tell you what that would look like yet, but I'm going to follow up tomorrow morning, or I believe it's morning, but I'll have to check my schedule to make sure we can do something about that. And just please, come on up, thank you.
John Fortune, 50 Hemlock Drive, again. So, in following that conversation, I think what I heard you said is, this map actually may be what's on Access GIS, the 2021 map, a map that the town has not voted for, but yet, this was my original question, who owns the map?
DEP.
So, if it is a map that is online, that we have not voted for, I think Mr. Allison's thought process of all this is, this is kind of crazy, because this map is now enforced with DEP for something that none of the town has voted for. That would be a real concern for, I think, all of us, not just me, if that's the case. If that's a map that's now up there, that is something that the town has not voted for, but yet we're following. Again, who owns the map?
So, my more clear understanding would be, the data on, the physical map you are holding, and Mr. Harris, I encourage you to correct me if I'm wrong, the physical map you're holding, the information contained within that map comes from MassDEP.
Okay.
Now, but the map you're holding, we would own, if we voted this forward, we would own in that, it then, that data that is then presented there, and also at the town clerk's office, et cetera, becomes part of our bylaws. So, when we talk about who owns the map, it's a tricky phrase, because it's information provided by DEP, but once the town makes a bylaw, that we own that sample put out, and that's our record of it. GIS is another information source that is, I don't really, I don't want to speak on GIS, because I could easily misspeak and misimply things, implying correct things, I don't want to do that. Mr. Harris, was that a correct explanation on my part, or anything more you want to add is welcome?
You're correct, that the MassDEP generates the Zone 1, 2, and 3 maps, it's their data source, it's just general information, once the zoning bylaw is adopted, that it will then become part of the zoning map, and then it becomes part of your regulatory tool. Until that's done, it's just information source.
So, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, except if, for the, I'm just, I'm concerned about people that are in these zones that have now changed at some level in the GIS map, may or may not be restricted for what they can do in their properties, their personal properties, that's really where I want to get to with this. And it's the zoning that gets us there, but if the map is up there, then it seems like they may be already restricted before the zoning has ever changed. That was my concern.
Thank you.
Who owns the map is important.
I would comment on that, I don't, I don't really think it is important, you know, because at the end of the day, our regulations are dictated by the state on this type of stuff. So, the reason that there's this conflict of understanding about maps and assessors and GIS, everybody does their own thing. We have our own GIS contract, so we can put whatever we want, as a town, on our Lunenburg GIS. So, does the state. So, the state owns the permits that the Water District has gained through the state to provide the town with public drinking water. So, as soon as that application is received by DEP and approved, and that well goes into use, DEP puts it on their website, on their GIS. So, the GIS right now is going to look like a combination, okay, so the state, the state GIS right now is called MassMapper, and it's maps.massgis.digital.mass.gov. MassMapper, if you just Google MassMapper, it'll take the GIS, you're going to be looking for regulated areas, you go down to wellhead protection areas, there's IWPA's, there's Zone 1s, there's Zone 2s. This is dictated to us by the state, we cannot vary from this, and if we do, it's not enforceable. That's kind of what I have to say on maps, and I don't disagree with you, this is not legible, I pulled out my magnifier on my phone, I could not read pretty much anything. I don't disagree with you, but for, to avoid having 20- and 30-page warrants, and to avoid excessive... expenditures by the town, you know, it's not unusual, it's not even uncommon, for there to be multiple warrant articles that are presented in the article warrant book, but the materials are available at the planning office, or at the clerk's office, or at the DPW. This is not unusual. This is not new, and it's, I certainly don't think it's a great inconvenience for anybody. This gives you a very good representation of what the actual map looks like. So the map itself is probably 2 feet wide by 3 feet tall, and this is maybe 8 by 10. So you're definitely not going to be able to get that quality, and especially not with the printing capabilities that this staple-bound booklet has. So, please.
Please, um, and.
I have a copy of that map that is in the booklet, right here, that is crystal clear on a sized piece of paper that would easily have fit in the booklet. It is crystal clear, the key is clear, you can read everything, the colors are clear, you don't need a big map. Here is a map that would have fit in the booklet that is crystal clear. But again, I'm only here to discuss this warrant article, and I personally could accept the two changes that Mr. Harris recommended.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Peace, I will, it's not so much helpful for this, but I am going to bring, for things like the map, I am going to bring forward the topic of printing quality and communication of alternate versions of getting the information. It doesn't fix today. But I am going to bring this feedback back to the powers that be who have, I believe I'll be bringing it, um, to the town manager, but I don't, if that's not the correct place, I will bring it others, to see what we can do to improve this style of communication in the future.
Will you have a handout that's crystal clear at the town meeting? It doesn't have to be big.
I, I can't, the question was, will we have a handout at town meeting?
Why can't we have a full-size print of the map, right there at the entrance of the meeting? How about that? How about a 2x3 plan?
That is what I would like to do.
Mounted on an easel, like we get here at Planning Board all the time.
That, that is what.
That's not unreasonable.
Yeah, that is, I am.
Depends on who you ask, though, I suppose, the unreasonableness of it.
Mr. Allison, that's what I'm hoping to do.
Okay.
But I need to find out what is available to us in a, within the timeframe. I believe that shouldn't be an issue, and we should have the budget for that, um, but I want to verify that and make sure we can get it done. And I don't want to say, of course, that will happen, and then not follow through, and say, yeah, I will definitely, I will make sure this information is available to the best of my ability ahead of time and at town meeting. I will find out what that looks like. I'd like to have a big printout that everyone can walk by, see, look at, talk to each other next to. I'll do my best to make sure that happens.
The water district may have one.
Uh, that, that, thank you. The comment was the water district may have one. If I don't write it down, it doesn't exist, uh, so.
If the town manager can email a PDF of that to the Reprographic Center, I could pick it up tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, can we, uh, let me get that info from you after the meeting, the exact.
Anybody.
Just restating the word, yeah, so that we can. Um, now, I do want to loop back to, um, I want to get the names, to, uh, Jack and Ann, Denny Brown, I, it may be one of them, it may be both, I don't know, I'm going with the Zoom name, um, who asked about changes to, uh, between the bylaw. And again, I can't give you a red line, because this is a full rewrite, but I do have, um, points in front of me, they do go over the changes in some more detail, so I would like to share those with all of us quickly, so that they have that info and everyone else does as well. Uh, I'm going to be semi-reading from a list, and, um, some of the big things to understand is, uh, what we're doing is we're deleting the current bylaw, which is from 1991, it's a 32-year-old bylaw, um, and updates to a bylaw that's using the DEP framework. Um, it does eliminate Zone 1, and this is for the reasons we've discussed, that that is the jurisdiction for Zone, jurisdiction being a technical term, so let me, the responsibility for Zone 1 is held by entities other than the town, the water district and DEP, um, and we're now discussing an amendment to make it clear that's what's going on, and I, I think that's wise. Specific changes, otherwise, we are going before, we did not allow impervious over 15% of the coverage area. And we will be allowing impervious, uh, impervious surfaces, those are drive, things that don't let water seep through, most driveways, roofs, things like that. Um, with, we will be allowing impervious over 15%, but with a special permit, so that we, with a special permit, and they have to be mitigating for infiltration of storm water. And the special permit does allow us to look at it, uh, that this mirrors the storm water process, that many of these things are already, many of these projects would already require, and by being a special permit, it does allow us to look at it holistically. Um, so that is one of the biggest changes from, you can't be above 15% to, you can if you're handling it adequately and appropriately. Um, the use, the overall use and restrictions for Zone 2 and 3 are very similar to the current bylaw. A lot of the changes there are wording changes for, to modernize terms, because things have changed, we use different terms, and a lot of the changes are modernization. Um, there are some items, such as the storage of deicing chemicals or some other chemicals. I think first, I think commercial fertilizer is another one, off the top of my head, but there are specific chemicals, and they're listed in this, you can look up and see which chemicals they are. Um, but the changes, those are prohibited unless it's in a building or has a contain, or has a containment system. So you can't, you can't have a loose pile of commercial fertilizer sitting on the ground going into the water supply. Um, the adopt, the new map is designed to more, is designed to more closely, uh, reflect our current understanding of the aquifer. So as technology's advanced, more research is done, we have a better understanding of the aquifer, the map changes are to reflect that. Um, uses in Zone 3 are permitted by site plan approval, and the reason that's relevant is site plan approval is an objective, not a subjective process. So that means that while people will have to go through site plan approval, so that we can verify things are being done correctly, and they're not going to contaminate groundwater or anything else, being objective, that means we don't get to say, well, we think it's black or white, it's rules, and that means that people who are going for that have the ability to predict and know how things will work. They can do their diligence and do it correctly. So that, that way, it's not, there's no fuzziness there, or no more fuzziness than everything in, in law and life have, I suppose. Um, and then there's just some, some other comments I have here, just that the goal was specifically to balance the need for protection of the aquifer with allowing us people to have as much use of their property as they can, rather than sticking hard and fast with, no, you can't, trying to open up wherever possible. And that's things like the, like the 15% infiltration can be overcome with special permit, uses can be, uh, the uses are met with, uh, site plan approval. So I hope that does answer the question. Um, if there's a follow-up, do put it into chat for Mr. Harris, but I, I did have that info, and I wanted to give you the more thorough explanation of what the changes are. So, do you have other questions, concerns, anything else? We're happy to hear from you. I'm getting shakes of no from the impersonal audience, and I'll give a moment as well for Zoom to use the hand raise or type something into chat. Um, if, oh, I see Mr. Harris has his hand up, so he must.
Jack and Ann Denny Brown asked, will swimming be allowed?
There is nothing, to my knowledge, in this that has anything to do with swimming. Um, yeah, I, I, Mr. Harris, I, I know you've read this as well, I don't remember anything about swimming, so I'd say no, but I would ask you, just, or everyone else, in case we didn't touch swimming at all.
I think it says something about fishing and motorboating, I think, I'm not positive, but I think that was the last complaint that I heard about it. I didn't hear that tonight, but that's what I remember about last year's.
That was Zone 1, though, I thought, not Zone 2. I could double-check that, though.
Our Zone 1 is not going to be any different than that, that's the state Zone 1.
Well, that, but that, well.
So the state may not want you swimming there, I don't know, I don't think that's the case, but.
But that's the case regardless of what, of regardless of the text of this. Mr. Harris, thank you.
Look at the, um, permitted uses, and it specifically states outdoor recreation, nature study, boating, fishing, and hunting were otherwise legally permitted. So nothing here would preclude swimming, uh, but that typically is, the issues of swimming is a Zone 1 issue with a surface water body, that's, and that's a Mass DEP consideration.
So, nothing we are doing is touching swimming. Um, anything about swimming is within Mass DEP's purview, regardless of what we do here.
Yeah, in Zone 2, it'd fit under outdoor recreation, so if you had a surface water body in Zone 2, that, yeah, you could, you could do outdoor swimming, I mean, I'd see why that wouldn't fit under that, under outdoor recreation.
Great, I'm glad, I'm glad there was a question we could answer concisely, that, that feels nice. Anything else from our friends here, or our friends on the chat? Um, I'll give a moment for it, just to make sure. Um, I would, with nothing here, nothing in chat, I would move us forward at this point, but I also, again, I want to turn one more time to all the citizens of Lunenburg who came out tonight. Thank you. Um, my email is available on the town website, and, um, I can even look it up and say it out loud, how crazy would that be? I think it's M. Brenner, but.
Lunenburg Mass.
Yes, yes, it is M. Brenner, that's M.B.R.E.N.N.E.R. at lunenburgma.gov. Um, I'm checking my town email very regularly until we have a full-time land use director back, because many of us are pulling extra hard to help keep this town going forward, and it, many people. But if you have a concern, reach out to me. If there's something you'd like to see explicitly addressed, I have to get, uh, when discussing with the town, I have to get my, uh, slides to, um, the town manager, I believe.
Tomorrow.
On, tomorrow, I thought it was Wednesday.
November 1st, oh, that's Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, so I, I am writing and polishing my slide deck tomo, uh, tomorrow, but feel free to send me any emails if you have any thoughts or concerns with how this might be presented, because I'm happy to get that feedback. Um, and please, reach out with anything. Thank you very much for joining us for this part.
Thank you. Likewise, my email is, is available as well, first initial, last name, M. Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was on you, buddy, good job.
I, this, it.
You're running it.
I know, it was on all of us, very clearly, it was on all of us. I, I, I have to speak more. Um, and for the record, this is what I love about town government, is when people show up and we have the back and forth and can figure things out.
Yeah.
Um, that feels good. Um, Mr. Harris, I do have a question for you, because Mr. Allison brought up the concern that we may not be able to address the, um, the farm article due to listing. Um, could we talk about that quickly, because that would let us know how much we should really be looking at it tonight?
That's probably a town council question, but yes. Uh, what can, what's the question about it?
Okay.
So.
You, you understand it, I, I have not given a big look at the warrant article book yet, so.
So we got our special town meeting warrant booklet, and Article 9, amend the code of Lunenburg for the Water Supply Protection District. Article 12, amend code of Lunenburg, section 2450, 4.9, Water Supply Protection District. Article 14, amend code of Lunenburg, section 240, 250, 6.4, driveways and entrances. Article 15, amend the code of Town of Lunenburg, uh, Office Park Industrial for the, uh.
Solar canopy.
For the solar canopies. And Article 16, amend code of Lunenburg for solar energy systems. Agricultural Commission's article is not mentioned on the warrant, and I don't believe that the town moderator would even, even.
May I see your copy?
Of course, yeah. I, I, I'm pretty sure, because it's not on the handbook, that we can't vote on it at town meeting, so, um.
It's not on the, it's not on the warrant, it can be vote, cannot be voted on.
Exactly. So I just want to thank the powers that be for dropping that ball. Not you, of course, Richard.
Um, well, the only, I'm looking to see, is it listed in the text? I know it's not on the initial table of the warrant, but I'm looking to see if it's in the, what article is the one that would be?
Well, there's two, there's two water district articles, so I would assume if it was in there, it would be one of those.
So that's where, I'm just, I'm looking through the articles quickly.
Why don't you go ahead and let me do that?
Okay.
And you guys can.
Great, thank you, Mr. Allison.
Sure.
Uh, wow, and now there is no one else in Zoom.
It's amazing.
Mr. Harris, you're probably very on top of this, but I know we do often have people come in late, so I'm assuming you're looking at the.
Yes, I am.
The waiting, thank you, great. I only mention it because there's times we've been like, uh-oh, someone's there.
Yeah, that's happened to me a few times.
Yep, thank you. Um, all right, so, that is the Water Supply Protection District, um, article. Would we like to look at and discuss, um, solar bylaw or parking, yeah, next?
Either one, I think, would be fine.
Let's do solar bylaw.
Because we're going to have to hit them both tonight, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, solar bylaw.
And this is another oddity, is because there are four warrant articles, we have one public hearing. Have you had that happen before, Richard?
It depends on how you write the legal notice, uh, but yes, normally what I would do is have one legal notice, but I would have each of the articles as a separate section of legal notice, so it's delineated. Um, no, and I usually label them, because when I have article numbers ready, I'd usually label it Planning Board Article 1, Plan B Article, or A, or B, or 1, 2, 3, something like that. Um, but yeah, that, I've had multiple, uh, articles that, in one, in one hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let's look at Article 4, um, to see if the town will vote to amend, uh, yeah, the large-scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic installation. Um, and this is the one that adds that when they discuss large-scale, ground-mounted photovoltaic installation, we're adding the phrase at the end, specifically excluding parking lot solar canopies as defined in section 250-4.5A6 and 250-4.6A4. So this is the one that just says, don't count, so the parking lot canopies under large scale.
Under large scale, got it.
Because large scale has different, and, yeah. Um, although, Mr. Harris, that, that does remind me, um, when we were talking today just about other bylaws we might want to look at, solar was. we might want to look at, solar was another one that has come up, our solar bylaw, because it is 10 years old and dated at 10 years old, because technology is like that. I knew there was another one. And, so, do we have anything to discuss about this? I...
I, I think this was the one that wanted to come second, right?
Yes, because we're only changing it if the other one goes through. Yes. But it was short, sweet, and the one I happened to open first in the PDFs. I am comfortable with it as written, but I'm getting a thumbs up from Ms. Reed.
Yeah, I think it's fine. Just Article 4, that's what we're referencing.
Yeah, just Article 4.
Okay, yep.
Um, I would have other talks about the other solar canopy one, but...
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Article 4?
Article 4, yep.
No, Article 4, Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, or Article 4, um...
Article 4 on this, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of...
Oh, yeah.
250-4.13.
So that's the fourth article submitted by Planning Board?
Yes.
Is what that refers to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
But that actually, modifying large-scale ground mount, that is actually, in the booklet that we all received...
Oh, boy.
Either 15 or 16, I believe it's 16.
This is a reasonable difference that occurred, because we numbered ours submitting them, and then they give them different act, their numbers in a different system.
Wonderful.
Well, this could have something to do with the 300-plus hours a week that the taxpayers are paying for, but not receiving services for. Could be part of it. Just a comment.
All right. I, I'm hearing no other thoughts on it, other than, yeah, that's what we talked about and seemed to agree to. I see no members of the public in the room. I see no members of the public on the computer. So, let's look at the other solar canopy. Oh, I have, these are listed sep, because I have solar canopy C warrant article and solar parking canopy OPI warrant article on the PDFs, and I think those were...
So C is commercial and OPI is office park industrial. We had to change two spots on the chart, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And I think those were combined into one article, which...
Yeah, because it's just, it's, it's the same table, but it's two changes.
Yes.
Yeah.
As opposed to the other one, which is separate. So we can discuss those together. I mean, this was the Select Board, so when the, when Adam and I brought this to the Select Board, two, excuse me, two concerns that they brought forward. One was that we are, um, one was a question of, should be, we be requiring that some of the handicap parking be under the canopies? With the idea being, the idea being that wouldn't people who need, who have a handicap placard quite possibly also want in benefit from parking under the canopies? The lo, the logic Adam gave in response, that, that made sense to me, was effectively that nothing's stopping them from making additional parking there, available there. But requiring it could create issues with, um, with, the place you put the canopies may not be accessible.
Right.
And that could turn it into a much larger project without actually, when there's already an acceptable amount of accessible parking.
Well, so any place that you've got handicap parking already existing, it is already existing as accessible, because handicap parking requirements specify no greater than 2% grade in any direction. So it's a relatively flat spot that the parking space and all that hashed area next to it has to be on. So, I don't think that they're gonna need to be redoing the pavement to put these canopies down, do you?
No.
So then that shouldn't be an issue.
Our canopies have some setback requirements, I believe, from the building, too, maybe not. But the thought was that, basically, businesses may elect to put them there, but requiring it wasn't necessary.
I mean, I think, I think it would behoove any business to have their handicap parking covered, as opposed to having everybody else covered and not the handicap. That just doesn't make any sense, right? And regulating it, it kind of makes sense, but as, as, as we've already discussed, there is a technical difference between general parking lots, which can be up to 8%, I think, 10%, and handicap spaces, which have to be a minimum of 2% any direction.
Maximum of 2%.
Maximum. And, yeah, you don't want to design it that way, because they come out there with these levels. They do.
The other aspect, if I can, uh, handicap spaces must be the most direct entry into the building.
That too, that too.
And most often, that, well, I've seen solar canopies, they tend to be away from the building.
Uh, thank you.
That, they don't necessarily have to, but what I've seen, more common they are. And if you require them to be covered, that could make it, that they could be a deal breaker for somebody wanting to put solar canopy in.
And, um, do, if I remember correctly, these are all by special permit, if I remember correctly. So we have, we also have the ability, the planning board, to men, to mention that this is creating covered parking for those without accessibility, without accessibility issues. And that is something that the business, we can make business owners aware, and they may well take into account. Or not, but, um... Another concern that came up was, uh, the Select Board had some height requ, had some concerns with our height requirements as we put them forward. And that was, I, I have the email from you, Mr. Harris, I can look up, but you can probably share, summarize your thoughts as well about that a little bit. There was a question about, is the height high enough? Is the minimum height high enough for, um...
Now, the, the issue is, you don't have a minimum height.
Ah, right.
You have a maximum height. And solar panels are usually slope. So if the maximum height is 20 feet, the lower height's gonna be something less than that. And that could be an issue for trying to make it workable with bigger vehicles and stuff like that. So I suggested what you could do is, uh, at, in, um, E, where it says maximum height for solar canopies is 20 feet, propose an amendment that would allow the planning board to grant a higher, a, a greater height, if necessary, to accommodate emergency vehicles and/or, uh, ser, uh, vehicles, then plow and other services of the property. So that way, you stick with your 20-foot maximum, but somebody came in and said, hey, but I've got trash dumpster, they come pick those up, and where I need to put these canopies, could interfere with that, or snow plowing. My snow plower does stuff in Mass D O T, and he's got a big dump truck, could make it a, a higher limit so, to allow them to plow those.
So, I quite honestly don't remember talking about a maximum height. I mean, I know we have a maximum building height of 38 feet, I believe, in town, maximum building height. And I think that the zoning enforcement officer would consider these as structures. Right? So structure, max structure height, 38 feet. Now, if we specify 20 feet in the solar bylaw, then that specifies that these canopies can't be more than 20 feet. Regardless of our structure. Are we sure that we were talking maximum? Or did we say minimum, and that get transposed to maximum? But it, that too, doesn't make sense to me, because we've got some bridges that haven't got 14-foot clearance.
Right. I was gonna say 20 feet is high, considering the average semi is 13 and a half.
Right.
So why would 20 feet, you know, it meant, that wouldn't make sense for it to be a minimum, because that's too high.
Well, let's, we could do some quick math here to think about if it's relevant, in that there's a set, I mean, there's an ideal angle for solar panels at this, at this position, right? So you can take that, you can take the width of two parking spaces, which is what these almost always are, and figure out what that low end is going to be based on our maximum height. If you know the, the pail has to be at a certain angle, and you know one height, then it's a trig.
That's too much math.
And we have an engineer sitting next to us.
Yeah, that is too much math for me. I'm so sorry.
Pythagoras.
Yeah. Like, I think that's more Sokotoa at that point, but yeah.
A squared, B squared, yeah.
Oh, my God.
But, and it may be that this, that, it may well be, this num, these numbers were calculated on the side to verify.
Well, regardless of where it came from, I do agree that having a maximum and no minimum is a little silly, and now it makes me wonder if we're gonna, if we're gonna have no minimum, are we gonna require people to, like, like the D O T puts on bridges, max, max clearance? You know, or is that something we should have thought of?
Well, that's, I think, one of the reasons it's a special permit, is so we can look at some of those unique site-specific issues. Because there's going to be a difference between Brixmor, if Brixmor were to do it, versus a small business that has a 30-person parking lot, and what those two installations would look like, be, due to things like, there's, what, you know, the small business is gonna use a pickup truck with a plow to move things. Brixmor uses other, larger vehicles. I'm not opposed to saying, in granting the special permit, the planning board may approve a higher height, if determined to be necessary for emergency vehicles and snow, snow removal. That does require us to ask for an amendment, but I don't think it's a bad ask, and if it doesn't go through, the bylaw itself can still be presented. People might want to have that as the max height, and then businesses can figure out if it works for them.
Well, since this is a public hearing, we've got no public here, maybe we should just bring it back to town meeting with a note saying, well, we've noticed that we've got a max height of 20 and no minimum height, well, how do we feel about this? Throw us some amendments on the floor. Mr. Murphy, I'd love that.
I just wanted to say that...
It was sarcastic, by the way.
Okay.
Just doing a little research, it looks like fire trucks are tw, about 12 feet high. Snowplow, industrial snowplow, about 11 feet high. And then your average semi truck is 13 and a half-ish. So, I don't know if we want to stay 14 minimum to 20 maximum, or, as Mr. Allison said, just bring it to suggestion.
I, I would suggest that if we would want to go in with a suggested amendment to smooth that process.
Suggested, yeah. I would agree with the suggestion.
And, because I can put that on a slide.
Yeah.
And maybe, I, I'm comfortable with Mr. Harris's suggestion of, the planning board can modify it with a special permit for these reasons. It's a special permit anyway. They know they're gonna be subject to the special permit process. And, but it kind of gives a clear indication of why we'd be looking. And then it's up to the business to say, yeah, we have, uh, we have 20, we have, you know, 20-foot-tall snow removal devices, because we're special.
Sure.
Well, Walmart, they use loaders, and when the, when the bucket goes up, that's gonna be more than 15 feet, I would say.
But how, how often does the bu, does the bucket need to go up all the way?
Depends on how high the pile is.
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, they're not going to be piling it under the canopy. So can they, would they be able just to scrape it out, and, but that's, that would, with that amendment, that would be up to the business to figure. That's...
Great.
And, and the issue you have is, some, as we all know, some people are lazier than others when they do plow.
That's an understatement.
True.
So, it sounds like, it sounds to me, when I'm reading the room here, that we're leaning towards put, taking Mr. Harris's wording as a suggested amendment, and putting it to the town, and if they like it, putting it forward as an amendment, um, to kind of give more wiggle room for businesses. And is that...
I would agree with that.
Okay.
But something that Ms. Reed said also about the fire truck, um, that's, that's, that, that's probably not a ladder truck, and it's certainly not with the ladder extended, or up even. So I don't even know if we had any discussion with the fire department about this bylaw recommendation. Because if we're suggesting that we're gonna regulate construction of structures in already-approved parking lots without conferring with the fire department, that could be a problem.
My question for you.
Please.
I don't know your process for special permit review, but what I'm, what I'm used to is that any application for special permit would tip go to fire department, public works, et cetera. And presumably, if you did that, if they had issued, they would let you know that they had issued in this particular case of proposed parking canopies.
That was my understanding, was during the special permit pro, process, it would go through fire department?
I, I agree with that, yes, and that is our, that is our general, um, take on things here. However, also, it's not uncommon for us not to get a response, and the message relayed to us is, oh, if they didn't respond, so they're fine with it. Which I'm, I'm, I'm very much against.
Now, I'm, I'm used to harassing certain departments and certain officials for responses on projects that I think they are critical.
I wish you'd take this job.
I can't.
I know.
Yep. I am comfortable with, I am comfortable with us in the future pushing back on that notion as well. For, for the reason stated, that...
Agreed.
All right, so, um, Mr. Harris, I'm gonna be putting the slide deck together tomorrow. Like, kind of, I'm gonna say all day-ish, but let me verify that in case I'm secretly... Yeah, okay, yeah, no, not in the evening, because tomorrow's Halloween, silly. But I will be putting it together tomorrow, so if you could give me a recommendation for the wording, so you gave me the wording, but where we would put it, so I could then... Uh, you're muted, sir.
I would put it right at the end of, uh, E, right after 20-foot, close parentheses, period. I'd add the sentence there. Mr. Allison, I commented, one problem I've, I have run into several times was fire department saying they had no comment, and then when somebody came in for building permit, then they decided to have comments. In one case, in one case, they came in with a comment right as they were finishing up the building and required a new entrance, which the planning board has specifically said to be landscape. Now they had entrance there, so we had to work with the property owner to appease everybody.
Okay.
Care to venture what town that was?
South Hadley.
Thank you.
All right. So, we've talked about, and now talked about putting, having the suggested amendment for the height. I have the wording that Mr. Harris just shared with us, is in my email. From a conversation earlier today. It might have been sent to all of us, I don't know. But we can put that, I can put that in as suggested amendment within our slide deck.
I apologize. I'm trying to locate what's wrong.
Uh-oh.
Well, congratulations. Well, congratulations, we now have one member of the public back with us. Oh, good. Oh, good.
Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good night.
And there was just a member of the public coming back looking for their phone that was put behind, just so people that, seeing the recording later, don't wonder what the discussion was. All right. Do we have anything else to discuss on solar canopy? I felt like we looked at that a lot prior. And that was, the feedback was the handicap parking, which we talked about. And the height, which we have a potential solution for.
I just want to make one comment on the handicap parking. I think most businesses that would be moved to build a larger scale are typically the ones where the handicap parking are with the non-handicap parking. So there are several of them where the handicap parking is, is along the side of the building. So I would understand with the minimum distance away from the building, it would have to be built. But I feel like, like Walmart is an example. The handicap parking is here and then the regular parking starts from there. So they're all kind of interchangeable. So I'm not, I, I see, I see the select board's point about making sure that handicap parking is included in this. But I'm not sure it needs to be regulated as such because typically with these larger scales, the parking is all together.
I, I, I think that is a, I could not have put together a better summary of my thoughts because that clarified them for me. Thank you, Ms. Reed.
And I would just note that it's a special permit. Somebody comes in and you think, hey, why haven't you covered the handicap parking spaces? That's a legitimate consideration and rather not grant the special permit.
And that was going to be my next thought as well, is something we can, in, in future iterations of the board, can press on as they deem appropriate.
Okay.
Great. So, Mr. Allison, did you ever see if the agricultural bill, if the text of it was in the warrant?
I did. I did. You want to read my report?
I would love to hear from you on this topic.
Okay, so, everybody listening at home, which I'm sure all five of you are really concerned, on the warrant that we receive, I received, I think, last Thursday in the mail, articles one through 11, the article number corresponds with the description in the booklet. When you get to 12, the article numbered 12 is the second description of the Water Supply Protection District, when in fact, it is actually, the next one down, it's the vote for the parks. So article number 12 in the index of our booklet is not even an article. The article 13 is described as article 12 in the booklet. Article 13 described in the booklet is the farm change. So basically, article 12 and 13 are not correct in the index of the warrant, but the substantive text of article 13 description is the article presented, put forth by AGCOM. So it is in the warrant article, it is in the warrant.
Okay.
So we can, I believe, talk about it.
Great.
Probably have a conversation about this at town meeting.
Let's, let's then discuss the agricultural. Now, that's something the board has talked about far less because that is something we are presenting effectively on behalf, on behalf of AGCOM because we're the one that feeds to.
Right. Well, yeah, they don't have the bandwidth for that. There's no, there is no technical support. There's no town support. There's no paid staff. Volunteers make the agendas, write the minutes, take, take care of everything.
So-
Run the market.
Mr. Allison, I would actually, being our member of AGCOM here, I, rather than me spouting off at everybody, I would turn to you to lead this part of the discussion, if you're willing.
Sure. Well, it's, it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, it, the amendments that we proposed, there's, there's a total of three changes to our current bylaw. All three of them are examples of us referencing a five-acre requirement for a farm, which, so the right to farm stems from Chapter 48, Section 3, which is an exemption for the act of farming, Chapter 128 in the state's charter, I believe, for, anyways. The three instances that we're correcting in our bylaw currently are not enforceable as they're written because the state changed the exemption for farming to zoning. So farming gets an exemption from zoning. So that's state level. So again, going back from state to town. If the state has exempted it, we can't say, no, we still enforce it. Right? So what the exemption used to say was five acres or more is considered a farm and they're exempt from zoning. So what they've recently done is reduced that requirement down to two acres, from five down to two, with some additional income requirements annual to qualify for the benefit of the farm producing products. So quite honestly, all three of these changes are already something that somebody could challenge our bylaw with and win. So we're, we're just catching up to being correct.
So this is making us in line with what the state says we have to do anyway.
Right.
Very good. And for the edification of others at home, it's five acres for a farm or at least two acre, five-plus acres or at least two acres and getting, and gross of $1,000 per acre?
I believe that's the situation, but I'm not-
Mr. Harris is nodding up there. So I sound very knowledgeable, but he and I also had parts of this conversation earlier today, so I don't-
Excellent. Excellent. Did I misspeak at all?
No, it's, about 2008, as a economic development incentive, the legislature decided to have the two-acre threshold. If you gross $1,000 per acre, per year, from agriculture use on the, on the property. And nobody has ever explained how you track that and how $2,000 a year is a economic boon for somebody on two acres of land.
Oh, yeah. Pretty small margin. People talk about margins on restaurants? Yeah. Try raising some cows and see what the margins are like.
I tell you, if, if you're grossing $3,000 a year on three acres of land and that is your economic profit, I hope you have another source of income.
I mean, it does cater to the hobby farmer and makes that a more, a more valid option, but-
Well, basically, if you're growing flowers or you, or you've got a backyard garden of cucumbers and tomatoes or you're beekeeping, it allows you to sell stuff on your property that way. It should also be noted that the legislature exempted or removed marijuana production from the exemption.
Yeah. They exempted marijuana from the exemption.
Yeah.
Because, of course.
They could tax the crap out of that.
Yeah, because farm growing.
Yeah.
The other reason is a lot of us said, as soon as recreational marijuana passed, we're going to see two-acre marijuana farms all over the state. And they quickly made it, put an end to that.
Well, there we go.
There we go.
If you can imagine, if you can imagine roadside stands of marijuana production.
I can't imagine that. And I don't know if my personal opinion of that agrees with everyone, but there we are.
The cultivation versus the sale, they, they could be regulated differently, but, you know, I'm not going to get into the minutia.
All right. We have discussed parking lots making power. We've discussed microfarms. We've discussed attempting to not put pollutants in water. Super paraphrasing for anyone at home. Please don't be mad, or be mad, I mean, that's your right too. The last one is, man, I wish these meetings were like at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Common driveways.
The last one is driveway, thank you. You said it, but audio processing. Driveways and entrances. And for those at home, this is a change to our common driveway bylaw that, our current common driveway bylaw allows common driveways only if they split the lot line between the two properties in question. And this has, in our experience, especially in recent years, resulted in some pretty wild lot lines to meet that requirement.
Creative.
Sure, creative. And the, and so this one removes that requirement, but puts in others as well as allowing four, up to four, sorry, up to four residential lots or six commercial lots to be serviced by a common driveway with very specific requirements that must be met in either instance that were set by, by the fire department or modified by the fire department to make sure that these would be safe for emergency vehicles, allow, still allow appropriate water in the event, appropriate firefighting capability effectively. And it overall, the goals being to reduce curb cuts, fewer entrances to roads is often safer. And as well as decrease things like, like the amount of impermeable area because one driveway is less area than four driveways. As well as looking at all of that, we did take steps to ensure that all the lots must still have frontage on the same road that the common driveway opens onto. That way, we are not creating additional buildable. This is not taking lots that were previously unbuildable and turning them buildable. This is taking lots that would have been buildable and just saying, no, you can do the driveways differently for safety, environmental, and economic factors. Would you agree with that assessment? And please don't agree if you disagree.
I would like to add that we haven't found a way, we haven't, we have looked and have not discovered a way that this is going to increase developability, but we have also, we, we can't guarantee that it's not because it doesn't require it to be on the property and it doesn't, it only requires the property to front on that road.
Fair. So we, you're, you're correct. We've looked and cannot find a way. But people are going to people.
People away. And if I may, I would just add that currently, we only allow for residential common driveways for a maximum of two. And I think we're increasing that maximum to four.
Yes, we are.
And I think that we had previously a max grade of 12%.
Oh, those are great changes.
And we're decreasing that to 10%. We're also changing, I believe, max length right now is 800 feet, or is there no max length?
I don't remember, but we-
1,200 feet for residential.
We have a fairly kind maximum length in the, in the new one. Like a generous one that was approved by the fire department to make sure it was going to be acceptable from a safety standpoint. Whether or not someone wants to maintain a 1,200-square-foot driveway is something for people building those to figure out.
Linear front.
But-
And also, we're adding commercial.
Yes. Commercial common driveways were not previously allowed and we are now, again, curb cuts, et cetera.
With the max number of lots to be six with public water available, four without public water.
Oh, that's right.
And that was the discussion we had about fire truck hose lengths.
I thought we also had different maximum lengths.
Yes.
For if public water was available.
Yes. Max length 1,800 feet with public water available, 1,200 feet without public water available.
Yep.
And this was all ba, that was based, again, on input from the fire department. We're not pulling numbers out of thin air there.
We actually talked to the fire department about that one, too.
All right.
I just had a question on it. Can you look in your warrant under B8? Is there a B8 or does it end at B7?
Five, six, seven.
Seven? Okay. Just making sure because what we have in front of us is like kind of unfinished. There's like, B8 is missing and then there's three notes at the end of the document.
Okay.
So I'm assuming this might be an older version and then this is the updated. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting like Adam's notes in the warrant article.
So what happened is Annie put our documents in here for this meeting.
Okay.
And the, the versions that were in the public drive.
Perfect.
And what happened was Adam had done the final tidy, sent those over. Now, if Adam were still with, still, still with us, he's gone, dead, dead to us. No. But then that would have, text probably would have made it there quicker. But, and again, the printouts you have are just, I, in case we had a technical, technical issue, I wanted us to have the hard copy, so I literally just opened every document in the file and said, print five times.
So this is, this is definitely going to have an impact on something that's already been permitted. I'm just going to go ahead and bring it up because that's what I do. Currently, we permitted, what was it? It wasn't Little Leaf, it was, it was a similar corporation.
There was Bright Farms and now it is no longer Bright Farms. It is, oh, I, I can give you that meat, that-
Either way, the permit that we issued for Bright Farms was based off accessing that lot through Brixmore's property, which currently is not allowable through our regulations because that was commercial and we don't have commercial common driveways. So we do have one existing permit that is not buildable without passing this new bylaw. And for, to, to bring it even full circle back to home, is, is that first applicant is not intending to come here, but we've since got another applicant.
Lufa Farms.
Lufa Farms, which is looking to do about half the size of the development in the same location. And again, they will not be able to do that because they didn't buy the commercial property. They, they must have frontage. They've got to have, anyway.
They do have, yes, they, they do have.
Small amount of frontage for the utilities and stuff to go along.
I could go back and-
Not developable for an access road, though. So anyways, that development behind Walmart is going to be dependent on passage of this in some, in some fashion.
Will it? Because it was going through fine otherwise, so I don't know that that development, maybe that isn't considered a common driveway and has some other classification.
I brought this up, I brought this up with Adam and he, yeah. Anyways, there's that.
All right. Very good. I'm comfortable with this as we've reviewed it previously and as it exists now. Amanda, oh, sorry, Ms. Reed is shaking her head. I'm very-
Yes. Definitely. Good to go with it. This is like one of the first things we talked about when I started on planning board.
I like that. That's a very polite way of saying, can we please finish this and get it off my mind?
Just end my misery.
All right. So, you know, waiting for Mr. Allison's thoughts.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm just noticing that, that, that we had made recommendations on previous articles, but they're not printed in the warrant. And I would assume that we're going to want to make, what, four or five different motions for recommendation or?
That's what, yes. I would agree with that assessment and that's where I was going to, I think that is everything in this public hearing that we are set to talk about. Now, would we close the public hearing, then make recommend, then vote for recommendations?
I believe so, but- I believe so, but.
Yeah, Mr. Harris is nodding his head. So if people are comfortable closing the public hearing, I would accept a motion.
A move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Move and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing for the zoning warrant articles.
Yes.
A little bit more accurate?
Second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right. And now we should see about making our recommendations. And I would accept a, and Mr. Harris, if we do this in a way that isn't going to work, I'll trust you to say, hey, wait a minute. So I would be looking for a motion on. Oh, golly, that's just a lot of gobbledygook.
Yeah.
This technical.
That little blurb.
I can make a suggestion.
Yeah, please.
I think you could entertain a motion to recommend all five articles as presented with the, supporting the amendments that have been discussed in the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Very much appreciated. All right. That clears up our public hearings. We do need to move back to the decision for two seventy-four Prospect Street.
I just wanted to note on two seventy-four Prospect Street, Mr. Willsmer, Willsmer's name is not at the top of the document where it lists the members.
Yeah, no.
He's not listed, but he is on the signature sheet.
Yeah, I don't think headers are that important on stuff.
Stating it for the record.
We can take this on the front page. We can take care of that.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I did not vote on this one, correct? Because this was your last meeting where I was not here?
I believe that's the case.
All right.
You're not Xed out, though.
Yeah, I know Sir was not Xed out, but neither was Mr. Torgerson, who I'm assuming was not here.
But I'm not chair.
Yeah, you're also listed as chair.
Oh.
I thought I'd put you as vice chair.
It says Matthew Allison Chair, Matthew Brenner Vice Chair on the final page.
I got them backwards. Sorry about that.
And Mr. Torgerson should always be last.
Okay.
All right.
Because Mr. Torgerson has only been with us for maybe ten meetings since 2020.
Okay.
So with, with the final page not being printed correctly, can we still handle this or does it need to be?
We can. We have to go back in and sign it tomorrow or whenever, I think.
Okay.
Great. I'm sorry.
My question, though, is the chair wasn't at the last session of the public hearing.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Tim was, but he's not there tonight.
Yep.
The chair allowed to vote on that, that he was not the hearing one.
Okay. So let me remind you that a stormwater special permit is not a special permit.
Not a special permit, it's just a stormwater permit.
Right. It only takes a simple majority. Does that change your mind? Yeah?
The problem is, simple majority is three.
That is, that is a problem.
Yeah. So now, did you not already, is this a decision review or is this voting?
Oh, this is actual decision. We already voted to approve it.
We closed the hearing.
We closed the hearing.
Advised that the only conditions were standard conditions. There's discussion about hours of where they can do the construction, but they didn't actually vote on the decision. That was be done at the next meeting, which I thought was the thirteenth, but I guess was tonight because I didn't think that's been meeting.
No, I'm apologizing. This was in your absence, Amanda. Annie had contacted me saying if, is there any reason we can't put the stormwater, we can't put this on for tonight? And I said, as long as the decision is ready, I don't see why not. And that's as far as it went.
Okay. But, okay, so this would be, you haven't approved, you still have to vote on the decision.
We still have to vote on the decision.
Okay. Then it sounds like we cannot vote on that tonight.
It does, doesn't it?
All right. Then it will go to our, it will go to our meeting on November thirteenth.
Two seventy-four Prospect. And.
We'll correct the.
No, so this is the one in the Wayland District. This is the three lots, the six duplexes, I mean, the three duplexes on the corner there by the Rotary.
Okay.
Okay. I was, I was confusing myself. They are well aware that we have already approved it and they were there for the discussion of this, but.
See, I feel like I was there for talk, oh, was it continued? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I haven't had a chance to, to review the last meeting.
Apparently was, apparently was, hearing was October second, continued to October twenty-third.
Got it.
The chair wasn't at the twenty-third meeting.
Yep. And I haven't had a chance to review, so I can't mullen rule and vote.
Well, you'd have to have signed it already by now.
Oh, you're right. Fair.
So I'm going to circle the things that are not correct. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
What else did we notice? Mr. Brenner, as long as you mullen, you can sign. But if he doesn't mullen, then he should not be voting?
Right.
I will, I mean, I will be reviewing it, I will be reviewing the meeting before the next, before the thirteenth, so.
And Richard, can you tell us next time you're going to be in the office?
I would definitely be there. I'll definitely be there sometime on thirteenth. I won't be able to be at your meeting, but I'll be in the office sometime on thirteenth.
Now.
I can arrange to be there sometime next week if that's necessary. If there's a meeting, doesn't need to meet, if there's reason to have a meeting, I can attend sometime during the day there next week.
Not so much concern about you attending meetings so much as getting this revised and ready for the next meeting, that's all.
Yeah, I can get revised from home, email it to Ann. Just give me the change, the corrections and.
I can even snap, the corrections you've marked, I can snap a photo later and email it to her.
Well, we're going to be in the office tomorrow anyway. We can just scan them and email them to them then. Right? Sure?
I'm not, am I going to be there?
Don't we have to do slides?
I was going to work on it at home, but if you want to be there and help, I can certainly work in the office, too. It doesn't matter. It might even be, I often make my personal office Smokestack when working because.
Nice plug.
Does somebody need to go in to sign a, in our plan?
I signed that tonight. The mylar is there on the table. Thank you.
Great.
So if the chair can take a snap picture, email to me, we'll make the changes.
All right. Rock and roll. We can do that. All right. So there are other items on the agenda that I, that were put on there because they are standard agenda items. And Annie got this out, but then had to leave, which is absolutely fine. But I'm going to mention things. If we feel there's something that we should address, say so. Otherwise, my plan is to skip them because this is not a standard meeting. This was called for the public hearing specifically and we threw in the decision because we felt we could.
I like your Plan B better.
Board discussions, nothing's listed. Minutes approval, I don't believe there's any. I see for two fifty-five Sunny Hill Road, two seventy-four Prospect Street, but that wasn't even in the file.
No, yeah, we don't have it in the files.
Great. So, okay. Committee reports.
Nothing.
No? No director's items. Meeting schedule, as always, all meetings are at six P M. Unless otherwise specified, at Town Hall. We have them coming up on November thirteenth and November twenty-seventh. Under ongoing items, I don't believe there's anything there we need to look at now. And I have no particular, there was no call with over/under today. We've been calling it the biweekly call, but it is not. It is like our meetings, it's like a first and third thing. So there was no call today.
Okay.
So I can't tell you how the weekend went. And public comment. Seeing none in the room, seeing none on Zoom. Board comment concerns.
I'm going to plug Smokestack again. So that, that upcoming November second meeting from six thirty to eight, is that the E D C sponsoring that or is that the Business Association?
That is, that meeting, that's us, effectively. That is the, that is the comprehensive planning.
The steering committee.
Yeah, the steering committee for the master plan. And so that is coming up on November second. It is being hosted at Smokestack. So if you want to attend an actual, an actual meeting about the future of this town and do it in a place that, look, I love Town Hall, but if you want to do it in a place with like coffee and maybe more comfortable, it is being hosted at Smokestack. So that is a choice you can make and I do hope you join. Again, the mass, people will say master plan, comprehensive plan, whatever we're going to call it, that's the document that is going to guide Lunenburg. Once we adopt it in eighteen or twenty-four months, is going to guide Lunenburg for the following ten to twenty years. So please, 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 if you're still here, I know you care about this town and you want to be there. I get on my knees, but they're bad and the camera won't see me. So any other board comments or concerns?
I will mention that it is intended to guide for the next decade or plus. However, our most recent update was twenty fourteen for one section out of seven or nine sections. And it's basically spent its life in a closet. So the hope is that it will guide us.
Well, I, I will use a moment then for board comment concerns. I would like to share my personal agenda with this board. And this is one of several of ours' personal agenda. But what I would like to see us doing is over the next eighteen to twenty-four months before the master plan is brought to us and hopefully accepted and everything's hunky dory, I would like us to consider looking at bylaws and things we need to do to shore up what we have now in a non-transformative way. My recommendations would be things like the sign bylaw that's kind of a mess, like the solar bylaw, which is become outdated. The things that really just probably need to be addressed. And I would like us to consider doing that so that once the town makes its voice heard with the master plan, we have hopefully an open, we have open time because we've done our other work so that we're then in a position to really take the will of the voters and move it forward into action for the town in a timely manner. So that things aren't sitting in a closet and so that we're demonstrating the value. And I think that's good for the voters. I think that's good for us to be looking forward. And I hope it sends a message to other groups in town that the master plan is there to be used. I am one member of, even though I'm chair, I am one of several on this board. But that's what I would like us to consider doing so that the master plan work isn't fruitless. If others have thoughts on that, fine, but I thought I'd share that anyway.
I concur. Full agreement.
All right. That, all that said, if we're going to adjourn, someone needs to do some movement.
A move that we adjourn.
I will second.
Moves and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meg Arang, thank you, everybody, for joining us for this meeting. You got my email earlier, so if you have concerns, feel free to send them along. Have a wonderful night, everybody.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. Thank you.